You're good? All right, I'll call the meeting to order. We're going to have the salute to the flag. We have some volunteers who are going to say the pledge with us tonight. So can you four children come up here? Can you walk behind? We're gonna fit you right back here. So walk right down. Go that way. Okay, so we're gonna go like this. We're all gonna get in here. You're all gonna fit. Okay. You're all gonna face the flag, right? Is everyone ready? Okay. You ready? Say, put your hands up. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You can go back to your seats for a few minutes.
I want to do this.
So Everly, you're gonna have to sit in a chair just for a couple of minutes, okay? All right, thank you. Okay. We'll call the members, please.
Trustee Malinsky. Trustee Connor.
Here.
Trustee Herzak.
Here.
Mayor McFetrich.
Here. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
To move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right. We will now have presentation of petitions, communications, and general question period for members of the community. And we are lucky to have an entire family here tonight. So is there anything you'd like to say to the community about? Anything you'd like to have in Champlain that we don't have here yet? Or what you really like here?
This is not the whole family.
Well, it's almost the family.
I like the the part here. I do too.
Good, good. Everly?
I like the poke here and I like the flag. And I like the one we went to last night. We went to the, I like doing uh
You like doing the crafts and different things in the community.
And I like the building, what the outside looks like.
Oh yeah, with the decorations on it too?
I like the candy cane on it.
The candy cane on. Oh yes, the candy cane on, yes. Well, listen, do you have anything you would like to add?
No, I think they covered it. And with that, I think we will head home and you guys have stuff to do.
Well, we want to really thank you all for coming and for doing the pledge so nicely. And can't wait to have our next activity together.
I like, I like Santa Claus over there.
Oh yeah, Santa, yeah. Right. Okay, we're gonna let you go home now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Have a good Christmas.
Did you take a picture?
I did not.
Do you mind if I get one?
No, guys, can you go stand over there again and get a quick picture?
Can you do this one more time and we'll just get a quick picture?
I know.
That was a smart move. Okay, you wanna look at me this time? Rather than the flag? Okay, I'll be fast here. All right, thank you.
Good job, good job. Bye.
Bye.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you.
See you Thursday before Steve. See you tomorrow before it's Steve.
I have it right here, buddy.
Very busy.
I don't want to stay.
Wants to stay. Next, we have the report from the code enforcement officer. Think you have that in your packet? I don't know if anyone has any questions on it or anything you want me to share with Chris when I see him later this week?
You know what, I don't know, I haven't seen him, but spoke to the owner of residential project Route 9. Built and found during constructor inspection, building will be replaced or removed, which
That's just up the street here, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, one that they were speaking of.
Yeah, the one that, yeah.
Okay, okay, I just didn't know which.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Is that recently?
Let's see, wait, where are we?
Which one are you on?
Oh, that's all, if you read down further towards the end, there's another report on that one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, further down, yep.
Okay, because I did see a vehicle there.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Yep, so that case is closed. We do have some progress on some of these, which is, which is good. All right. Here's my report. Good evening and welcome to the Village of Champlain December Board Meeting. The year is drawing to a close. As we look back over 2023, we can be grateful to live in such a close knit community. Some of our accomplishments this year include the wastewater plant project nearing completion. The water line replacement work will begin in the spring. Numerous celebrations were held, including our 150th birthday party, Arbor Day, and the Holiday Fest. Several concerts in the park were enjoyed by many. We were awarded a small number of grants, which brought activities such as the sensory garden, board games for seniors, walkability training, and many kids events. We continue to work with the Health Department to make our village a safe place to walk. We have a new business open downtown called What's in Store? And another business will open soon in the Old Falcon Drugstore. The Village of Champlain has many challenges, but we continue to see potential and possibilities all around us. We are very fortunate to have an outstanding group of employees here, a dedicated Board of Trustees, and many residents who are involved. I'd like to congratulate Mike King, who just retired as one of the DPW crew. So congrats, Mike, and enjoy your retirement. Big thanks to Sally Jarvis and Lori Brink for organizing the Parade of Lights. It's really become a tradition now and we appreciate the organizers and the participants. I'd like to take a minute to thank those who made the Holiday Fest event so successful. A big thank you to Nikki Malinsky and Tricia Rye. I can't make that big enough. For all their work on the children's activities at the Champlain Meeting House and the candy cane hunt at the playground, which I told Nikki she had to run, she had to run that for me because I didn't know how to do those big steps. I so admire your creativity and commitment to our local children. Huge thanks to the Village DPW crew who spent hours decorating the park and putting up all the hanging decorations. The village really looks nice. And to Mary and Juanita for the organization of the tree lighting ceremony as well as making the office so festive. Thanks so much. I also need to inform residents that you will be receiving a letter sometime soon, probably next month, explaining that a federal lead and copper rule revisions have gone into effect. This requires that every community must develop a water service line inventory of all buildings in each community. We will be asking for information regarding your water service line or we will need to visit your homes to see what, see the service line to determine what material it is made of. More information will be provided in that letter. Thank you in advance for your cooperation as we work to complete this requirement. I send sincere wishes for a beautiful holiday season and remind you that this can be a difficult time for many people who may be lonely, isolated, and missing loved ones who are no longer with them. Please take the time to include your neighbors by sending a card or a personal greeting. It can make a world of difference. Thank you. Reports from the trustees. Nikki, want to start?
The park looks great. I like the lights that are up there. They're new, right? The ones on across the top?
Mm-hmm. Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah, it looks nice. On the decorating topic, the house decorating contest will take place with judges going around the village next week. So December, say 18th through 22nd, have your lights on. And we will announce the winners at the January meeting. The annual kids' Christmas crafts and candy cane hunt was a success. Over 25 participants came and enjoyed the festivities. It's always busy but fun. And yes, thank you to Janet for always having the ideas for us to go on. And thank you to Tricia Rye for all her help in preparing the activities this year. I am planning the next activities to be scheduled during the school break in February. So there'll be some time off, just so I can do what I need to do.
Yep.
So February school break will be our next. There'll be a couple of events that week. We usually co-work with the library. So we can get some kids over to the library during that same week. And that's all I have for now.
That was plenty.
I always feel like it's not enough, but that's what I have now.
It's plenty, especially the energy level at the crafts and the candy cane. Really high. Chuck?
I don't have much, but I just wanna thank everybody for all of your done through the year. Nikki and Janet and the other trustees. We had a somewhat busy year this year. And again, I wanna thank Mike for all the service he's had over the several years he's worked there. And we're gonna miss him and all he's done for the village. So, and just for the public out there, we do have an opening. So if anybody wants to work and has qualifications, we appreciate an application for that one position in the DPW. I just wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and good luck to everybody. That's it.
Thanks. Thanks, Chuck. You too. Joel?
It's hard to believe that it's another year almost gone by. It's crazy, time flies. Thank you to Mike for all your years of hard work. Congratulations on your retirement. I'm sure you'll enjoy it, hopefully. Thank you to the DPW crew. The roads are fantastic. Every time I'm up early in the morning or out late at night, I'm pleasantly surprised that I'm not driving off the road.
That might be your driving ability.
This year at least. Fingers crossed, fingers crossed. We still have a couple more months to go, so. That's about it.
All right, thanks, Joel.
A report from the clerk treasurer.
Okay, everyone has their expense and revenue report. We're at half year. They look pretty good.
Yeah, it does look pretty good.
We had a water and sewer billing. Water was $70,007,5150. And sewer was $66,854,47. Any questions?
Any questions on any of the expenses?
No.
Next, we need to approve purchase request from Mike. Mike Jolker.
So it's the packet if you go to the superintendent's.
We know that our lawnmower is on the caputs. We've been band-aiding it and band-aiding it. But Mike found a used 60-inch, I guess it's new, New Holland blade mulching deck for $500. He'd like approval to purchase it.
So this is compatible to what we have?
Yeah, we have a New Holland. Yeah, it is, and he checked with the distributor to make sure that it would work. And he was assured that it would.
That's probably a pretty good deal.
It's a very good deal. Could I have a motion to approve this? So moved?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? We'll call.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Herzak.
Hi.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
The second is he needs new tires for the 2016 Ford F-250. The quote is from G and G. If we can approve up to $1,200 for the removal of the four tires, balance, and align.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? So we're going to, the motion is to approve up to $1,200. No questions? We'll call.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Herzak.
Hi.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
So these are tires installed and warrant. Okay, and the last one is to approve the purchase of holdup suspensions for the truck with the plow.
And he's looking for an approval of up to $650. So I'll make that motion? Do you have a second?
Okay.
All right, discussion on that? No.
I guess that truck kind of gets beating.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
When they're out following.
This would really help.
It's worth it. Couple more years.
We'll call.
Trustee Malinsky. Trustee Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Herzak.
Hi.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
Okay, and now we, before we do the warrant, we have a transfer for sewer. It's because we spent so much money on tipping fees.
Oh, yeah.
So we have to transfer from, or to G-8130.4 Treatment and Disposal Contractual $5,000 from G-8130.2 Sewer Treatment and Disposal Equipment $5,000.
Do you have a motion?
Move.
Got a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this transfer? We'll call.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Herzak.
Hi.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
Do we want to do the other two transfers, the other two bills as well or wait till we do the warrant first?
Let's do the warrant first.
Okay, okay, so the warrant. We have additional invoices of $2,454.64 for a total warrant of $140,741.43. Yeah, this includes our workers' comp policy and it also includes our payment to the town for the water project, which is
Is there a motion to approve the warrant with the additional invoices? So moved?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Is there anything on here that?
Well, some also already approved.
Right.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, so these, we've got the deck and the grabber, the tires, those are, do we just approve those?
Yeah, we had to approve them.
We had to approve them, order to include them on the abstract.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's why we had to do that first.
I was just making sure we're not dual different.
No, no, no. He found that information, but you know, told the person who's selling it that has to be approved first, obviously. So we had to do that first. Any questions at all on any of these?
I don't particularly have to do one.
Yeah, but when you take, when you consider those two, you take $93 out and then
And then the perma one.
Yeah.
Yeah, then it Paying the town for the youth rec program and codes enforcement.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, that's true, yeah.
That's another thing that adds.
It's those once a year.
All right, we'll call.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Herzak.
Hi.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
We have a couple of bills to approve for the water main project replacement for Barton and La Judas, $625. Do I do them both together or?
No, we should probably do them separately. May I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to approve $625.
I know, this is the lowest that we've had, I mean, that we've had.
I guess I'm so much in shock at that small number, I just can't stop.
Second.
All right. Any discussion or questions? We'll call.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Herzak.
Hi.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
We also have two more bills for the wastewater treatment plant that we need to approve. And of course, we haven't gotten our money yet, so they'll be paid whenever we do. And we have one for Barton and La Judas for $30,643.25 and Triangle Electrical, $11,362 for a total of $42,525.25.
Do you have a motion to approve this payment?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Are we pretty much done with all our bills for that project? Are we still getting a lot more coming?
I'm sure there are more coming.
Oh, for the wastewater?
For the wastewater, there's
Yeah, it's gonna be winding down, but we still, I mean, it's until we get the grant money, that's what we're waiting for. I mean, we were told any day now, but
I'm hopeful this week it will be released.
Okay. Hold to it. Anyway.
Wait, did we do the, did we?
Oh, we'll, we'll call.
No, I didn't do a roll call. Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Herzak.
Hi.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye. All right. Okay, I guess I'll go. Thanks for a good job on all this bookkeeping stuff, Juanita. A report from the superintendent. We have Mike Jolker's report.
What's being done to the Kubota?
Down to the Kubota. The Kubota is still in the shop for repairs. Let me think.
That was in the last month.
Yeah, probably waiting for a part that's not
The little plow?
Was the Kubota, was that what they were using when they were moving down that sludge and everything?
I'm not sure.
That's, that's the blue.
That's, is that the New Holland? No, that's the, that's the Holland.
I'm not sure.
I, my guess is they're waiting for a part. So it's been in there for a while.
Probably they're not using it right now, so it's not a, I don't know.
Yeah, it was sent to shop for repairs for the November meeting.
Yeah, I think it's a part. We did get those new life edge plow blades though, which is cool. And they're installed. And we'll be getting a $1,500 money back from
They had the new battery for the Peterbilt, was that something was under warranty?
What's that?
The Peterbilt battery, the new truck we have.
Um, Mike still has the bill. He's been talking to we haven't paid anything on it.
You would think it would be under warranty, but I don't know what the warranty is.
Well, it was, yeah, that's, yeah, that's what Mike's been
Tell about the new truck?
The new truck.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty.
That bad battery?
Well, they were supposed to service that.
No.
And anyways. Mike is working on that, but no, we don't, we haven't paid that bill.
Any other questions or points you want me to bring up with Mike and get back to on?
No, but thank you for fixing that drain.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes. I don't stream.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah. Kind of a big deal.
Yeah.
All right. Correspondence.
Franchise fees from Charter Communications, correspondence from New York State DOT regarding bridge and culver funding, $4,000 tobacco grant funds for the rectory materials, $2,105.49 mortgage tax distribution in Clinton County, letter of termination to Nicholas McSwinney, and correspondence to Rebecca Drake.
Okay. Under new business, we have the building permit fee schedule, which is a recommendation. Don't tell me I have this out of order. I don't know if you've had time to look this over or not. Any I mean, we don't have, we don't have to approve this tonight, but I would like some input. We haven't changed these fees in years. Our current fees are considered pretty low. This moves them up substantially though, so I don't know how the board feels about that.
It would've been nice to know what they were and what they, what they, compared to what they are proposal for new one. You know, that's all.
I think these are the ones that, some of these we didn't even have.
No.
Some of these are
And the minimum fee right now is $25.
Twenty five.
Almost everything's $25, it seems. I believe these are the same fees that are proposed by the town. But if you have specific points that you'd like to bring up, we can discuss this with code enforcement. And then we can bring it back to our meeting in January. But I do need some input.
I think we, I I feel like this would be definitely something that we could rack our brains together
Yeah.
with everyone and get an idea of what we think is appropriate or what we think is something that is fair and also is beneficial for everyone.
Right.
You know, I'm not gonna
Right.
pick them any grease, but there are some things, I feel like there are ways to get around certain things and
Do you want to
Be fitting to maybe brainstorm?
Yeah.
That's my thought, but
Do you want to take, table it for this meeting and come back?
I think it would be helpful, I would, you know, I mean, it's up to everyone. I mean, I think, like, what are they now, when was the last time they were changed?
Mary, do you remember that?
When's the last they were changed?
Yeah.
It's been at least 10 years because they've been the same since that day.
Yeah.
But we can get, we can get a copy of what
What they were.
Yeah, I'd like to see that if we could, that way I can compare.
Or even just, you know, how
It's probably been more than 10 years.
I think it is, I think it's like 20 or 30. But I don't believe we have fees for all of these things now.
No.
Some of them maybe look, look brand new. Fence, for example, I don't think we had a fee for
No, we did not, yeah, we did not before. And solar.
And solar, I don't think we had that.
Yeah, and that's a, I think a topic of discussion, you know. Do we want to incentivize people to get solar panels or?
Well, we could probably have a working meeting where this is the only, the only topic.
This one seems like a, I think it would be worthwhile, but if everyone, it's up to everyone else, I think.
Well, I think we need some discussion on it, yeah. How about if I see if the code enforcement officer could come to a working meeting with us, this being the sole topic? He would have input on these topics that we're not even aware of.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, of course.
So I, it.
Yeah, I mean, he's gonna also understand the best ways to enforce and have practical solutions or at least ideas of ways to solve the problem, I imagine that, at least I want to have the answers to.
Well, the only way it's gonna be enforcing is if he goes around and sees it happening, pretty much. That's how he does it now.
Well, yeah, that's the best way to do it.
Yeah.
And then sometimes people call him. And then a lot of people call him and it, just because they're going to do it and they
Right, right.
responsible and they ask.
They don't know.
They don't know. And then, then they find out. And we are, we are redesigning the shared service agreement between Rouse's Point, the Village of Champlain and the Town of Champlain to share that code enforcement officer. And so, and we're getting a software packet that's going to be a lot easier to track things, to hand out forms, to keep track of things, which will help him and his job a lot and the public in terms of reaching the right kind of forum. So what do you wanna do? Wanna try to schedule a, a working meeting and see if we can get Chris and?
After the first of the year.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that's what I'll do.
Remember budget two after the first of the year.
Yes. Yep. Coming right up.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so this will be, we'll just say this is tabled for now. Maybe we need a motion to table that. Let's do a motion to table that. Have a motion to table that.
Second.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right, the service line inventory. I briefly mentioned it in my report. Just so the public who might be watching this understands a little, a little bit about this. I just printed out the EPA fact sheet and I'm just gonna read a couple of things so everyone understands. So this, the EPA is really working hard to strengthen actions to protect communities from lead in drinking water. So that's the main focus of this. The water service line inventories are the foundation from which water systems can take action to address lead service lines. So the, every municipality in the country is going to have to establish an inventory of all of the lines, every building, whether it's inhabited or not, or used or not, every building. And we have to determine how we're going to get that information and determine the data sheet that it's going to be on. And there's a lot more than just lead or whatever the material is. Mary knows more about this than I do really, but it's a pretty, but it's a pretty advanced sheet that we're going to have to fill. And then you have to get that information. So if we've got records, what lines went in, we may have that information, but most of our homes are old and there aren't any records. It may be that the owner knows and can take a picture and can verify it with some kind of little test. But I bet in most cases, we're going to have to have some of our employees go in and examine it and write down what it's made of.
So it's the water line coming into the house.
Yeah, it's a service line off, yes, it's a service line.
I mean, you can't see what's on the ground, but you can see what actually comes through the
Right.
the basement wall or whatever.
And sometimes maybe you can't see it. And so in that case, they might even have to excavate a little bit. And this all has to be done by mid-October of 2024. So we've got about ten months. The first step that we're, well, we're going to be looking for any kind of records that we may have here and then we're going to send out a letter so people understand that we're going to start looking for this information. I just want everyone to understand. Any, any questions? Not that I have answers. I'm no expert on lead water lines.
Well, I think after a house is built, after a certain year, they couldn't put lead lines in anyway.
It's just that that's such a small fraction of rooms.
Right, yeah.
So many. You know, I mean, my house is like a hundred and seventy years old.
Yeah.
Okay. SBA Office of Disaster Recovery. So she couldn't, the woman who was going to talk about this couldn't come tonight due to the roads. She's going to reach out to me tomorrow with information about this. I don't know that I can explain this very well without her. Do you know more, Mary?
No, she just wants to get information out to anyone that might have been affected by the floods in January or, or July, I'm sorry. And the ways to do that and, and the guidelines for that, because there is a deadline coming up as far as when you can apply, actually apply for that. So I think she might to educate the public.
Yeah, we didn't have any in the village, but people may know other people that did. So we're thinking if we educate our public, then they can share it with other people. And it's, these disaster loans are often not available to us in Clinton County, so this is a pretty big deal, but it is available. We'll make sure that anyone who qualifies takes advantage of it. I'll wait to talk to her tomorrow and we might be able to post, I think we can post something on our website that explains this too. I think that would be helpful. All right.
The deadline is just over a month away.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but they keep extending those, or they did in Vermont anyway. It's a phone.
Yeah.
Mine's off.
Okay. Yeah, the deadline is January thirtieth, upcoming January, public. So if you think you know someone who might qualify from the floods, flood damage last summer, check in with us and we'll have more information. Water board report. Kim Chambly couldn't be here tonight, but she asked me to express to the board that to please carefully read the water board report. And if you have any questions, ask them in the thread, the email thread that's been going on, so they don't go every which way. There's still some unanswered questions, a couple that just came up today. So the water board will be putting out a revised statement. But everyone needs to study that to make sure that you understand what the expenses are and, and how this whole thing works and what our responsibility is, what the town's is. Make sure that we're all well informed. It is complicated, but if there's anything you don't understand, please ask. It's the only way we will all understand this. And once again, I thank the water board for, for their work. And Juanita for all of her work. She's been supplying a lot of information, tons of information. So thanks. Okay, old business. Did I get a phone call today from anyone?
No.
I have no further information on the dog law. I'm trying. And the second thing that I did not write in on yours, but it's on mine, is the settlement agreement and resolution for the Attorney General's Office dealing with the contamination out in front of the building. So the Attorney General has accepted our offer of repayment to the spill fund. That's the fund that funded the contamination remediation from, well, the contamination happened decades ago, but the cleanup came out of that fund. So we have a we have a resolution. This is resolution number three of 2023. Village of Champlain Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the Village of Champlain to sign the settlement agreement with the state of New York. State Spill Number seventeen dash zero seven eight nine seven, P I N zero seven eight nine eight. Whereas on December eleventh, the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain duly adopted a resolution entitled a resolution authorizing the mayor of the Village of Champlain to sign the settlement agreement with the state of New York. State Spill Number seventeen dash zero seven eight nine seven, P I N zero seven eight nine eight. May I have a motion to accept this resolution? May I have a second? Roll call.
Trustee Malinsky. Trustee Malinsky. Trustee Connor. Trustee Herzak.
Hi.
Mayor McFetrich.
Hi.
All right, I will sign that settlement agreement tomorrow. Anyone have any other business? No? May I have a motion to adjourn? How about a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Aye. Opposed, that motion carries. Thank you.
That's good.
Yeah.
That's a lot of work.
Yeah, Janet's been.